Call the meeting to order and welcome everyone here this evening and also those that may be watching later on, on YouTube or on our website. First order, I'd like to ask that if anybody has electronic devices with them, please put them on airplane mode or on silent or off so that you don't disrupt the proceedings. And second, I'd like to first ask that you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So briefly, before we get started on our agenda, I'll just make some quick introductions. I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the mayor. And to my left are council members Patricia Thol, Pam Mortenson, Mike Molitor, and Shannon Bruce, and then we have our staff is with WSB, our city engineer Paul Hornby, our city clerk Chris Lindquist, and then our HR Communications Coordinator is Cassandra Tabor on the end. And then to my right, we have our city administrator Mike Barone, our finance director Brian Grimm, our community development director David Abel, and our city attorney Ron Beatty with Kennedy and Graven. And then on the end, we have our chief of police Paul Falls. With that, are there any additions or changes to the agenda as presented? As listed, I should say. Otherwise, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion as in vain by Ms. Mortenson and second by Ms. Bruce to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favors signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we'll start with our special presentations. We have our street project update. Mr. Hornby.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. It's our next project update since we had last one at a February meeting. So to carry through, one of the things we should talk about, as you look through the schedules, a couple of projects have already been bid or are on the agenda for consideration tonight. And we do build contingencies into schedules, so we, for things that we can't control, we build contingency in the schedule so we can buy time for construction, so keep that in mind. So the first one we'll look at is Halsted Drive. So what I did is I gave you the update from February in the left-hand or the center column and where we are today and the current, and the current schedule. We're currently, on this one, we're acquiring easements. Easement offer letters are going out this week. I think all of them will be out by Friday, so our staff, WSB staff does go out and hand-deliver those. Although I think, I think what they're doing just to speed the process up, they're sending those out and then they're gonna follow up with each individual property owner. We have also have recommendations we're eliminating. I think there's three of them that we're looking at eliminating. Next meeting on the 15th will come to you to have you approve plans and authorize advertisement for bid. We would open bids on June 19th, bring that back to you on that meeting, or bring those back for consideration award. And then construction would start that week of July 5th and substantial completion, which would be the whirring course. The final lift of Batuminus would be on or before November 18th. And then the assessment hearing could still occur in October.
Would that occur even if the project isn't done yet?
Sure we could because this project is subsidized both by state aid and by bonds. So you could actually assess that anytime along the process if you'd like to.
And I think with having it substantially complete, you know what most, if not, you're getting pretty close on the cost. You just wanna assess as close to actual as possible.
Right, okay.
And then final completion by the end of June in 2018. That would be remaining punch list items and the final lift of Batuminus. Like to leave, this project is gonna have some areas of, at least a couple of areas where we're gonna have a bit of fill. So I'd recommend we don't put the final lift on until next year. Just because if you have some consolidation, I'd rather patch the Batuminus base course and have a patch-free wear course. So that's the reason we would do that.
And then just also another issue that we talked about is Farm Hill Circle because that was repaved when, with the water line. And we said we wouldn't redo it if it looks pretty good. Do you know how it's looking?
I've been evaluating that before, but it's actually included in the plans right now. But we can take that out at any time.
Well, I think we need to make sure we take it out before we bid if it looks pretty good 'cause we don't wanna have to...
You don't get, you don't pay for it. If we take it out, even if it's bid that way, you don't, you don't end up paying for it 'cause we can reduce quantity at no penalty, and you don't pay for it. When we bid these projects, it's unit-based.
Yes, no, I understand. I just wanna make sure it doesn't get lost.
No, we know that.
And then another question before you move on. So this was originally supposed to be done and was supposed to go out to bid in March. And now we're April, May, we're talking two and a half, three months late. Can you maybe explain to us why it's been this delayed?
Well, we had a couple of things that we've done. We've gone through a number of iterations on the profile mainly because we had a lot of potential impacts to owners. There's a driveway at every high point and every low point along this route, which made this very difficult. A lot of these vertical curves are 30 mile an hour or 25 mile an hour curves that are existing today. We are designing to a 40 mile an hour design speed, so you can get state dollars. So what ends up happening is you have potentially high fills in some areas and deep cuts in others. And we've tried to balance that out, and I think we've only got one area that's, that hasn't impacted one property, and we've been working with them to try to resolve that. So we are working on that.
So you're saying additional time was needed in order to reduce the impacts to the property owners?
Correct.
Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Correct, and also provide a closer balance in earthwork on the project itself.
Okay.
We also, and this was a council item, we did, we did go out and add it. We added a roundabout.
Right.
Of any roundabout. We had to do what they call an RJR, roundabout justification report. So that went through state aid. Not to require anything special other than some extra work and layouts that we had to work through state aid to get that done. And we also had a variance for a portion of that where we were trying to avoid floodplain fill, wetland impacts. And so that did slow some things down there.
I have a question, and I hope I'm not muddying the water. You said that the roads, as they are now, some of those speed limits are 25 to 30 miles an hour.
No.
No? And now they're gonna be 40?
No. What I'm saying is the existing profile, if I were to lay a curve on it, a vertical, a vertical curve, if I were to lay that on, it'd probably be a 25 mile an hour design speed in some areas. I have to design that to a 40 mile an hour design speed for state funding. So it ends up happening as a curve that went sharp like this, now it has to be more broad like this.
Right.
So that ends, what ends up happening is I have an increased fill area 'cause I have a sharp curve dropping off and a broader curve, and I gotta fill this area in. Or to balance that, I had to slide those curves one way or another and do a cut on that hill. So I try, I have to try to balance that so we don't have way more dirt or way less dirt that's gonna get haul off site.
The speed limit isn't changing. It's just that you have to design it for MSA funding. You have to design it to a minimum of 40 miles an hour.
For this design, for this traffic volume, we have to design it 40 miles an hour.
Okay, my concern, the reason I brought it up is because when we met with some of the residents, when some of the residents were here, their concern was that people were gonna start driving faster on that road once it was paved. And I just wanted to make sure that I was clear.
And that's not unusual, and we were talking about that, that that's basically an enforcement issue. So we'll have to get on it with enforcement.
At this time, we're not planning on changing the speed limit as posted today. So did I get off, did I tell your questions?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Well, the only other question then regarding Halsted and the bidding in June. How are bids coming in and will that be a good bidding timeframe? 'Cause that's my biggest concern.
Well, typically, what I have found is that you, there are really two bidding seasons. One for that first part of the year and one for that second part of the year. And so this would fall in very well for that second part of the year. I've had contractors tell me the same.
And, okay, and how have bids been coming in, do you know?
We've seen a little bit of a mixed bag, but most everything we've seen is, especially with larger pavement projects, have come in lower.
Okay.
So we're optimistic.
Question for you on this, Paul. When we talked about this back in February, I think we were considering changing the base from 24-inch filled to 18 on average. Is that any conclusion on that?
Well, I think the council told me not to do that. That was, so we didn't change that. We didn't change that, though it had paved shoulders. You know, we took that one-foot protective edge from aggregate off to help reduce impact for easements, so. I should say this has gotten into state aid. We've submitted the Watershed District permit. It did go in Friday. We've gone in today for that permit, the WACA permit for wetland impacts. That's already gone in. So one thing that we do have to do is we have to have easements in hand before we can open bids. So that's the one, next thing down the line.
And how many do you still need?
I think there were 16. And I think we reduced that, we've reduced that down now to 13.
Do you still need 16?
We sent, we're sending offers out, and if it's going to be an issue with some property owners, we'll just, there's three of them, three of them, I've already told them, we're gonna, we're not gonna give easement from them. We're, we'll engineer around that.
Okay.
You can't do that with everyone. And then there's two more that I think we can do the same on. So what we did send them out is offer letters. We've already got it in the plan. It'd be beneficial to have it, but if we don't, I think we can engineer around those other two.
So can we be obtaining the last of our easements? Say you've got open bids to award construction contract on June 19th. Can we still be approving easement agreements on that same night in conjunction with that, or how does that work?
If we have their signatures prior to the bid opening, which is, I think it's the Tuesday, the Tuesday before that, we have to have the signatures on the paper for the landowner before we open bids. Otherwise, I have to send an addendum out to extend the bid opening.
'Cause otherwise, I think we run into, we usually don't have that first meeting in the four, or July, around July 4th, and then you're really getting a month even later than that, so I think it...
Right, this is the day we want to hit, so. The way it's laid out right here. Enchanted Lane Tuxedo, as council knows, we were waiting for another community to make some decisions on whether they wanted also engage in a cooperative project. From a funding standpoint, they decided that that's a project that's gonna have to wait for capital improvement plans. So we are, this design is underway, so this is our updated schedule. We look at bringing that back to approve plans and authorize bids on June 18th and still have that constructed here by the end of October, first part of November.
And you don't need easements there?
No.
Okay.
And that, and that project actually also includes Grandview. So Grandview is essentially, the plan sheets for Grandview are done.
Okay.
They're sitting on my desk back in the house, but they've been done for a while. We just...
But you're gonna bid it with this?
We're gonna bid it with this project, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The 2017 million overlay, that's been bid, and that contract has been awarded. And we're working with the contractor to set up a pre-construction date now, so that would be done in August of this year. The Seal Co. project, that's on your agenda tonight to award construction contract. And that's a cooperative project with Sherwood and Victoria. And Sherwood and Victoria, I believe, are already approved, have already awarded on their schedules. The Westwood Drive drainage improvements, I do have to get back to this property owner. We exchanged emails, but I haven't heard back. I've asked for their title work to see if they have an easement. Mayor, you probably...
I saw the cap, email, yeah.
And also just make sure that they're, we're trying to get, move that ditch just slightly over to the south to get away from their garage a little bit more. And just wanna make sure they're okay with that slight realignment. So that one is just in quality review right now. And the permit should be going into the Watershed District for erosion control as well this week. That's it.
Any other questions?
The only thing I'll, before people chime in with some questions if they have them, just wanted to inform the council that what we plan on doing with the Halsted Drive project is the following. We would like to have WSB send out a letter. And this letter would go to all residents. And we have roughly 60-something property owners along Farm Hill, Halsted altogether. They've been talking with somewhere in the teens, 13, 16, 18 properties, and those are the ones that are looking for easements. A good chunk of our calls that are coming into City Hall are from those other 40 or so properties that are wondering, hey, I thought you were gonna do the project this year 'cause they're behind on, a little bit on this. So we thought a letter to all residents to let them know why it hasn't started and what still needs to be done or for it to start, and with the adjusted timeline, might be beneficial for everybody, would hopefully cut down on the phone calls that people might have of what's going on, and then also might put a little bit of pressure on our residents that are, I don't know if they're just looking for money for the easement. Of course, we were gonna make offers. We're gonna make fair offers based on all the work that WSB's right-of-way agent's been working on, so we just wanna keep those, those rolling, so.
And all these easements, they're just temporary construction easements? Are they not, they're not permanent easements?
They're all temporary, yeah.
Temporary construction easements, okay.
I guess, or the one another, maybe clarification is whether anything should be sent out to the Enchanted Lane residents, seeing that got delayed a bit by sort of waiting for Sherwood. I guess for lack of a better, you know...
I think both would be really nice, just because communication with the residents is important. So I think just sending out a letter to Enchanted, Tuxedo residents as well as Halsted. Even Grandview, just letting them know what the timeframe is. This is what we're looking at. And of course, Halsted, letting them know why the delay has been, so.
Right.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah, we'll put those together and we'll work with WSB and have those, review those letters. Staff will review those letters, and we'll have them as soon as we possibly can, so.
Okay, good. All right, any other comments or questions, the staff or council? All right, let's have no more delays, please. We need to get this done.
Well, I will, I will say that I think time spent planning and properly planning is time well spent, so.
And we know it's well planned.
Well, that's why we're spending the time.
Well, and just so council knows, you know, we, we also have conversations with contractors that are situational as far as, you know, if you had a project about this size, what kind of timeline do you think you might be looking at to complete that? Everyone we've talked to said this should not be a problem to get done in the second half of the year. It's mostly dirt work.
Yeah, let's just hope that it, that we don't get like torrential rains or something like that that would delay it, you know?
The engineer cannot control that.
I know, I know, so. No, and we appreciate your extra work and effort to try and minimize the impacts and easement acquisitions. So we really do appreciate that. I think our residents do too, so. All right, next we have our communications plan update. This is also exciting. Ms. Tabor.
Mayor, city council members, thank you. So I just wanted to take a moment this evening and let you know where we are against our communication strategy for 2017. We just wrapped up Q1. We're into quarter two here, so. Just a recap, so in 2015, when I started, we set our communication goals, which is provide information and resources, engage the community, and celebrate city pride. So those are things that we're maintaining as we move from 15 to 16 to 17. Our communication avenues, we have our new website that launched at the beginning of last year. It's not super new anymore, but it's new enough. Social media, we have Twitter and Facebook right now. And then community events, public meetings, and I'll go into that in a little bit more detail as we get moving through. Our ongoing avenues, we are, have been discussing updating our community survey, and I'll, I'll speak to that a little bit later as well. We have some statistics that play into some of the changes that have happened. We have our news media outlets, specifically The Laker as our primary, so we're working closely with Nicole. And then our newsletter mailing that we're doing as well, and again, I'll speak to that a little bit further on. So just a recap of 15, 16. Phase one, we were launching our new website and our Facebook, and that happened in Q1 of 2016. Phase two was engaging people since we launched all of our new pieces. So we did our Twitter launch, community activities, we did the bus tour, State of the City, and Trista Day, which of course has been going on for a long time. That was Q2 of 2016. And then phase three and ongoing, as we moved out of 15 and forward, was to expand. So additional e-subscriptions, our community service, some Facebook add-ons. And that was Q3 of 2016 and beyond. So those were the original, that was the original outline that we had. So 2017, as we look at planning, we're gonna talk about our website, social media, our community newsletter, and then our news media. So for our website, a couple of things. Our employment section launched when the website launched, but it needed quite a bit of tender loving care. So if you saw the first version, you'll be able to see that it's changed. I changed that from current, and our standard formatting was finalized, so it's a little bit easier to post jobs quickly as well as specify that things are volunteer positions. We had some issues with...
Those are for city jobs.
City jobs, correct, yep. And then we had some issues specifically in PD with just clarifying that things are volunteer positions, like our reserve versus paid. So I formatted that section recently with some communication with Paul to make sure that that's clear for people. We'll be adding mayor and council photos and bios in Q2. Get ready for that, haircuts. Spruce it up. We'll do director photos and bios as well in Q2, and I already had a little bit of fear and pushback on that one, but I promise we'll be okay. And then we're launching new building department pages, and actually, my goal is to have that done by the end of Q2, and I just wrapped that up yesterday. So Jesse and Chad, who are our building department, reworked all of our old documents, got those updated. We aligned with our new branding strategy, got all of those loaded and those pages built that's actually available and ready to roll. So just like any other page that we've built, we look for feedback as people are interacting with that page, and we'll adjust it as people are struggling to find things or looking for things in different places, just to make sure that it's user-friendly. And then ideally, in Q3 into Q4, we'd like to do a My Minute Trista photo contest. We're working right now with Evo Gov, who hosts our website to redesign our front page. All of the buttons, everything that you're used to seeing will still be there, and our residents will be able to find everything that they're normally seeing on the front page. But our goal, with some feedback from our city administrator, is to be able to see the pictures that are scrolling through a little bit better. I front-loaded a bunch of pictures, so right now it looks a tad awkward, but they're in the process of rebuilding. We thought it would just be a tweak and ended up being a rebuild, so we're working on that right now.
So residents can submit photos that they've taken?
Yeah, yep, and we'll get that all set up so that people are able to submit photos while the contest, so that will give us some fresh things on our website as, as well as maybe some new perspective, too, which will be good.
More engagement.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So speaking of engagement, so social media, we'll be rolling out a social media policy, and that will impact our staff and our council specifically, just so everyone is understanding what our policies are around social media. That'll need to go through legal, so that will be sent to that way. And then we need to address YouTube changes and some options. We put Granicus down as a possible option. Just recently, YouTube has decided that they, when I first came in, one of the things we had with our YouTube channel is we would upload the video just as is, just there's the video. And people were trying to interact with that video and find what they were looking for, and they weren't spending a lot of time on our video because it was taking too long to find the one little piece they wanted. So I went through and I did a menu so that people were able to jump to business, jump to special presentations, move around more fluidly. We were finding that people were spending, now we're finding that people are spending significantly more time. We were averaging somewhere between seven to 10 minutes when I first came on, and now we're up closer to averaging about 23 minutes that people are spending when they do get on to our YouTube channel, which is great. The problem is they took that ability away. So YouTube has become really profit-centric, and so they're adding things that just help you sell items, but that doesn't really help us. So we now spend a year getting everyone used to being able to surf through our videos very effectively and efficiently, and we've lost that ability, so we'd like to look at some other options. Social media always is about continued sharing, reposting, prompts, getting people to actually engage with our Facebook, our Twitter. Right now, we have good engagement. It's consistently increasing, but it takes a lot to maintain that, so people don't unfollow you and unfriend you on Facebook, so we'll continue with that. We'd like to do some informational videos as well. So for example, at one point, Paul and I had discussed taking a walk out to the intersection just below the farm, Galewoods.
Galewoods.
And doing a quick video about how that intersection works for people as they're crossing, who has the right-of-way, et cetera. Those kind of informational videos for Facebook. And then ultimately, we'd like to be able to use those on our public access channel, which I'll talk about as well, but that's something we'd like to do. Trista Day this year, we're gonna stream live on Facebook for portions of that event. We've got our pig naming contest rolled out as well. And then one of the things we're doing with all of our activities, but specifically with Trista Day right now, is an invet invitation. So on Facebook, you can post what you're doing, but you can also create an invitation so people can note that they're coming. They can interact specifically with that event, and we found that that's drawn a lot of engagement as well. So we're doing that for the recycling cleanup day and Trista Day as well. And then I would like to, in the fall of 2017, by the fall of 2017, to do an Ask the City live online chat. So what that is, is we would pick a department, so for example, Community Development with David. So from 7:00 to 8:00 PM on a Wednesday evening, he would, with me, be live on Facebook. We'd have set questions that we'd already have prepared that were open to answering, just to kind of get the ball rolling. And then people would be able to get on, post their questions that they have for that specific department. We'd be able to interact and answer those, David would be. And then if needed, or if the question is larger, we'd be able to defer them to the right person so that they're able to reach out to the city. So it's just another way to get real-time interaction and responses. It's something that I had picked up, a very similar idea from Shakopee last year, and I've participated in a couple of theirs, and it's been really interesting. So I think that might be a good way to, for us to grow some additional engagement. Community events and public meetings, so we have our second annual bus tour in June, and we've got people signing up for that, so that's exciting. Our second State of the City would be in January of 18, and then again with the community survey. Public safety events, we have Trista Day, Shop with the Cop, HeartSafe, an assortment of things that they've been doing. And then we sponsor Spirit of the Lake and the Tonka Brew Fest, as well as participate with the WCC. So just a couple of things that are going on. Always open to ideas, but we've got a time management piece, too, when it comes to these large events.
They told me I can't come up with any new ideas until next year.
We like to do things well, so we're gonna go with quality over quantity right now. We had really good engagement with these activities for first runs last year. What I'd like to do is take the feedback that we received and put on slightly better and improved events every year.
Absolutely, yeah. So, and again, the bus tour is June 13th.
Yes.
At 6:30, departing here at 6:30. Are we going to have a sign-up sheet at Trista Day as well?
Yeah, they'll actually be able to sign up at the front desk here, so, yep, they'll have access to that, and we'll post that.
And they can sign up on Face, on the website, or...
No, they need to call City Hall, and they can swing into City Hall. It's a $5 reservation fee per...
Person, or whatever.
Group household, just to reserve your block of seats.
That's a good deal.
Yeah, so if you've got four people coming in your group slash household, $5. Just to make sure, because we do have limited seating, and last year we did fill our bus. We wanna make sure that we're accounting for those seats. There will, there's always a no-show, so that always happens. Last year, we had a few walk-ons, and that worked out well, worked out perfectly, so we should be good with that as well. News media, we work with the Star Tribune, Lake Shore Weekly News. We don't get a lot of bites from them, but I continue to interact with them. Laker and the Pioneer, Mount West Tonka, we do press releases. We've got our coloring contests that's launching for the first time.
Yep, that was in The Laker. I saw that.
Super exciting, and then that's going out to all of the schools, which will be great. We did our naming contest with all the schools last year, all the elementary schools, and that was well-received. And then we do article and photo submissions for public safety, public officials, city departments. Electronic, we now have online e-alert subscriptions. As of March, we average, we had seven options and four... As of March, we average, we have seven options and for each of those seven options, we average 80 to 100 subscribers on average per e-alert. So for example, we have the city council meeting packet that people can sign up to get. We have between 80 and 100 people who sign up for that. We have public safety alerts. One of the biggest ones, that's over 150 now, is our Public Works alerts. They like to know roads, burnings.
Sure, great.
All of those things, so we have a lot of interaction on that. Our Crime Fighter newsletter for PD is just shy of 100 now. So people are definitely engaging on that. We would like to add council meeting e-summaries. That will happen Q two of 2017, May 15th. I'll bring you a sample of what that will look like and what people will get. So it will summarize the decisions that were made at city, at the city council meeting, so that people don't have to do YouTube or don't have to wait for minutes to come available. It's going to be very simple headlines for people, so they have that. So I'll bring a sample of that. And then we do have a public service announcement, a PSA channel that's available to us. We'd like to launch our cable TV channel as well this year, which is going to be a big undertaking, but it will allow us to run council meetings on a loop. So people who weren't able to see them live are able to do it that way. We can run PSA announcements, we can do the videos that we've created, informational videos. And then there's a lot of free information that's out there, free PSAs that are out there for us as well to run.
It's a lot.
A lot, yes. And then our community newsletter. So this is our old newsletter. And when I came on board, the first thing I did, Mike handed me the community survey and I read that thing from cover to cover. And one thing that jumped out was that 95% of our residents who were polled report reading this newsletter. So that, in, from a terms of scaling on that, was considered extremely high. So that's how he categorized it for us. So there's high demand for this. Of those 95%, 71% were okay with the format. They thought it was good. So we went from excellent to good. So one of the things I did was worked on a slight facelift that didn't cost us anything. It's a little bit difficult to tell on these pictures, but I changed up all of the border edging so that it was a little bit more contemporary, added significantly more color to it as well. And then we have moved from eight-page documents down to four-page documents. That allows us to keep everything in color and not end up with those black and white sheets in the middle. A lot of our softer and more urgent content is now going on Facebook, the website, Twitter is going out faster. And then ideally, I'd like to do a full facelift in Q four, which would involve taking that consistently four-page document, the money that we're saving, not putting out those eight-page newsletters. Hopefully, we'll be able to convert over to like a glossy finish. So I'm working with our printer to see what that would run us and see what we can do to kind of stay in the same ballpark of where we've been, but put out something that's just a little bit more updated than what we've been doing, so.
I did, I just want to say, I did receive an email from a gentleman saying he really likes the new formatting and he noticed the update and-
Oh, good.
And content and was just complimenting you on, on your work, so.
Fantastic. I would like as well on our website, if you recall, we purposely opted for an open-source website so that we weren't limited on space. So one of the things I'll do, too, is I'll archive, give archives for newsletters so that people, if they do want to go back a few years, check something out, it'll be there for them. We're consistently running out, last two years, this year and last year, doing three issues a year. As I said, the softer, more urgent content's going out. One of the things that I did is I partnered with Dawn, who handles our utilities, and she runs our recycling piece and we have a grant around our recycling. So we are required to put out information on that consistently and there are rules for that. So I had Dawn reach out to them and find out if it really had to go in our newsletter or if that's something that could go on social media and they said it could. So I just front-loaded Facebook and Twitter for an entire year so that we could run that, hit the things we needed to hit for our grant, and then we weren't needing to put out an eight-page document, which is nice as well. So we'll see those March, July, and November is what we're doing right now. Questions? Additions, Mike, anything you want to add?
The newsletter, I think, is the format that we've adopted and moved to, I think, is better not only for, better for a number of reasons. One, what we're trying to do in the newsletter, if it's information that's pretty much pertinent to all residents, we want to give them enough in the newsletter so they feel like they understand the full story. But many times, we'll connect them with a link. It won't be a hot link, but we'll show the link and they can go read more on the website. So we're trying to push people to the website through the newsletter as well, so. The other thing we're trying to do is a little bit more consistent on the calendar and contact information and where it appears. Yours pass, it would sometimes appear in the front page, sometimes the back page. Now, it's typically on the back, kind of below the fold, so that's where you'll find that information, so.
Good, any other comments? Good job, I know you have your hands full because that's not your only job. So, and I think talking to other mayors at the conferences past weekend, we're very, very fortunate to have you here and have this position that you fill and the communication that we do have with our residents. So thank you very much, doing a good job, so.
Thanks.
Okay, next we'll move on to persons to be heard and no one has signed up, so we'll move on to our consent agenda items. Consent agenda is A, approve our work session meeting minutes from April 17th. B is approve our regular meeting minutes from April 17th. C is a resolution to adopt and approve our claims. D is a resolution to approve our conditional use permit amendment for Minnetonka Sportsman's Club at 7480 County Road Number 15. E is a resolution, it's a comprehensive plan compliance of possible Three Rivers Park District land purchase on Farm Hill Circle. F is a resolution to approve a variance at 5325 Edsel Road. G is an ordinance, number, it's ordinance number 439, amending sections 505.01, 505.05, subdivision 3, and 505.07, subdivision 8. Also, H is a resolution to approve ordinance number 439 by title and summary. And I is a resolution to accept quotes and approve the purchase for trees in Lyle Park. I'd like to pull number I, the tree purchase. Is there any other ones that you'd like pulled?
I'd like to pull E, G, and H.
Comprehensive plan, G, ordinance amending, and H, title and summary. Okay, so, let me just make sure I get this correct. That leaves us with A, B, C, D.
F, I think.
F. And that would be it. Is there a motion to approve those consent agenda items?
So moved.
Okay, motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Ms. Bruce. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we'll start with you, Mr. Maliter. Comprehensive plan compliance, E, we'll start with that one.
So this is, I believe, the purchase of the land at Farm Hill Circle?
Yep.
Okay. Couple of questions on that and I'm not sure who to direct those to.
Probably David.
Okay. So, as I understand this, this is one piece of what will be, of course, a bigger plan. And I assume that we're, this is on the table because we have a willing seller at this point. Can you pull up the map of where this property is?
All those parcels.
Right. Is there a plan to keep all that land or is some, or are they just taking what they need for the trail and then selling out the rest?
That's yet to be determined. Right now, they're actually working with the Minnehawke Creek Watershed District because as, as you may recall, the Watershed District is also working on the Six Mile area in terms of wa- water quality projects. So they're looking at partnering with them for opportunities. They don't need all of the land, they only need a portion for regional trail. So the final detail isn't quite worked out as to what it'll all be used for, but they're working on that.
Okay. Next question is farther, farther north on this map, I think there's another map that shows that. There's, there's another map that shows the southern section of this. It's got the red, green, blue arrows on it, yeah, I think, farther, scroll down. There was like four routes and this is, yeah, here we go. On this yellow route, next to the property that were, that was in question here, yes. It looks like part of this trail is proposed to go along Halsted. Is that going to be on the road or off the road?
Off the road.
Okay.
And just so you know, we had a meeting with the Park District last week or the week before, anyway. And we, I mentioned that, and there's room in the right-of-way to put in a trail eventually if they wanted to. If that's, if that's your question.
Well, yeah, because it goes to my point a couple of meetings ago about making sure the Halsted's wide enough to accommodate this traffic.
Yep.
Because one of the, we have alternative B, that green arrow left to right runs pretty much parallel to Halsted. Until that's built, again, we'll see more traffic on Halsted because of that. So I just want clarification. The third item I want to clarify is on the other side of, what is it, Six Mile Creek? I guess it goes through there, but we have to build a boardwalk over.
Right.
That last piece that connects, is there, do we, does somebody, does some entity other than private homeowners own that piece of land already? Kind of where the yellow arrow comes out.
It's all private.
It's all private on Kings Point, on the west side of Kings Point Road.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
And the Park District is only going, would only purchase property if it's a willing seller. So they'll, they'll keep their eyes and ears open for so, potential sellers.
Okay, because there's a potential seller along Halsted, but we have enough right-of-way for that, is what you're saying?
That's, that's my understanding. We have enough right-of-way along Halsted to put in a trail. That, that section of Halsted that with a trail would be.
Okay.
Okay, okay, so then I'm looking for a motion to approve. It's called comprehensive plan compliance of possible Three Rivers Park District land purchase on Farm Hill Circle.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconding.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes 5-0. And then you had number G, that's the ordinance amending sections, so that was the view shed?
Correct. This question's probably for Ron. Can we pull up the verbiage here?
What would you like?
I think it's approximately page 100 of our packet.
90? Okay.
Okay. So, next page down I believe. Okay, at the top here, that first paragraph, I think this changes, if I'm understanding this, Ron, help me understand this. What we're saying here, for purposes of applying clauses one and two above, if one of the properties is over 200 feet.
Away.
Right, they don't have, this doesn't apply. Is that, from what I'm reading before, I thought it was both. I thought we had to have 200 feet on both sides.
No, no.
Okay.
At one time, 400 feet was discussed, so maybe that's what you're thinking, but.
I mean, it can't apply on both sides, but the threshold is 200 feet. In other words, with regard to either side, if you don't have anything within 200 feet, that doesn't apply.
So I'm thinking about the particular instance where this was, reason for this whole being is that this would not apply because one of the structures was past 200 feet, but the other structure was within 30 feet.
Well, the, the reason for the, the problem with that instance was because of the fire lane.
I, I get that, but I'm saying if we take that out of the equation, which this addresses that, of course, and we apply this now, the reprieve view still would not apply here.
No, it would.
Well, the one structure's over 200 feet away.
No, it's not.
Oh, it's not?
No.
Okay, but if it were, the, the other person next to them, even though they're 15 feet away, would still be, wouldn't, there would be no reprieve view for them.
I think the thing that staff looked at is how many times would that come into play? And it's probably very minimal.
The 200 feet, yeah.
Yeah, would be very minimal. What we were trying to fix, if you recall, is the language with the fire lane.
Right, we get, we have all that done. I'm looking at just this in particular, that's why I took the software aside. So what we're saying here is if it's, if either one's 200 feet, then it's, it's out.
Right.
Okay.
And, and again, it would probably be very few circumstances where that would actually come into play.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, and the reason that is, of course, is that this has to do with breaching a line that has to be drawn from two other points. And if you've only got one structure on one side within that, that distance and nothing on the other side, you don't have a line to draw.
Right. I'm thinking the other point, though, if you have 200 on one side and you're drawing a 30 to the other versus... It creates a situation, I'm thinking of the situation for this whole ordinance to begin with, the changes to it. If the other structure was 200 feet, because it's close to being 200 feet away, it's not, it may not be exactly, but it would, it wouldn't provide any protection to the homeowner that was aggrieved in this case, so.
Well, I would suggest we leave it like this and give it a try. We can always change the ordinance later, but this is kind of the, what we had discussed at our last meeting and given staff direction and we-
I think everything else is fine, it was just this one particular sentence.
Yeah, the reason, the original interpretation of the ordinance, it wasn't the 200 feet, it wasn't the word adjacent.
Right, I understand, right, yeah, then that's all being here.
It would certainly absolutely apply in this case.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions regarding this? I know we've talked about it many times, so. So is there a motion to approve ordinance number 439, amending those sections as stated previously?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any questions?
I am going to vote against this and I know I'm a minority on this, but we've talked about it before and I just think the ordinance is one that should be removed.
Okay.
And that's on record, so.
Yeah, thank you. All right, then, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay, okay, so we have four ayes and Ms. Bruce is nay. And then we have approve the ordinance to be, 439 by title and summary, to publish it by title and summary.
Both of them taken off to talk about it, so.
Yep, okay. So we're good on there? Is there a motion to publish ordinance number 439 by title and summary?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Maliter made the motion and Ms. Mortensen seconded that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay, 4-0, 4-1, excuse me, Ms. Bruce opposed. Next, just the tree purchase for Lyle Park. So I've been working with a young gentleman and his father and he's working on his Eagle Scout badge and also I've been talking to the Rotary Club and kind of tried to connect the two entities. And there's a possibility that this young gentleman might be able to do a project for his Eagle Scout project and it would be doing a formal professional landscape plan for the parking lot, around the parking lot in Lyle Park, and then also providing labor and, and also potentially some funding for that. And I'm just wondering if we're jumping the gun, buying these trees and planting them without having a total landscape plan in hand and- And I'm just wondering if we're jumping the gun, buying these trees and planting them without having, um, a total landscape plan in hand and, um, and going through that process first.
Uh, Madam Mayor, members of council, myself, Superintendent Peters, met with the Eagle Scout that you're referring to.
Okay.
Last week on site, uh, have been, uh, discussing back and forth different options and ideas. And the, the trees that we're purchasing will in, in no way have an effect on the project that he's looking at doing. Um, these are, you know, much, much bigger trees in a diff, completely different area of which he's proposing to do his potential project, uh, at, at the entrance. So, um, no, I, uh, this, um, will have no effect on, on that project or, or benefit to go along with it.
Okay, so where are these trees being planted?
Basically around the, uh, in, into, in the park of, uh, around the perimeter of the parking lot.
Okay, all right. Okay, so I thought that's kind of where the project was gonna be.
The project's going to be, uh, in the island of the entrance of the, uh, parking lot.
Okay, so just the island, okay, all right. And then do we know what kind of trees we are getting?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I, yeah, all right.
And how many trees are they putting in?
Twenty.
Twenty? And maintenance, I think I read there's some, they watered them initially, and then who, the city waters them after that?
There's an irrigation system in the park.
Okay, so that would work for that.
Mm-hmm.
So why wouldn't we have any, um, we, these are all coniferous, uh, deciduous, why don't we have any, um, evergreens?
Um, well, I, I, you know, part of this is the park's not done yet, so we're, you know, you, you, we don't wanna go too overboard. Are you talking evergreens in between, between the residential and the parking?
Around the parking lot, yeah.
Um, it's a combination, I mean, a lot of this is, is came from Gary and Candace at WSB in terms of species. Um, I wasn't directly involved in the species picking process, but the, the big thing we gotta be cognizant of here is obviously there's creature phases left to do in the park. And so they're keeping that in mind as they're planting what they're planting, uh, within it.
Okay. All right. And this is coming out of our par, um, tree fund?
And these are the best prices, I mean, I know trees are expensive, but there's nothing.
This is pretty.
This includes labor, don't you?
Oh.
They have to be planted, and they're big trees, so you can't just get, you know, can't get your shovel out, I'm sure they came up with a truck and truck them.
They're pretty goo, good size, right?
Yeah, two and a half inch diameter.
Okay. Good question.
I have a question, um, on the, the one that we're approving, it has a statement that if the soil isn't okay for backfilling the trees, that they could come back and charge more. And the other bids didn't include that clause, and I'm just wondering if, can we determine beforehand if the soil is suitable for backfilling? It just seems like it's a clause that could come back to warrant asking for more money.
We've used this vendor in this park, let, for the previous trees that were planted around the tennis court. Um, Gary's out there watching them, um, we, we have access to, if that were to come up, he would get, he would correct it right there on the spot himself.
But there isn't any reason why they couldn't use the dirt that's there, is there, that you're aware of?
I mean, if it's bad dirt, I mean, if, you know, if they dig holes and there's concrete chunks in it or, you know, I mean, you just never, there's, you never know what you're gonna find, but like I said, we've used them numerous times and not had issue with that.
And then Gary could bring in, um, dirt, good dirt too, from, from here, I suppose.
Likely they'll just plant it somewhere else.
I was just curious why the other bids didn't have that statement on.
They might just put the bad dirt in there.
Maybe.
Okay, all right. Um, then is there a motion to accept the quote and approve the purchase for the trees in Lyle Park?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, so Ms. Tho made the motion and Ms. Bruce seconded that, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. So next we move on to our public hearings, we have the renewal of liquor licenses for West Tonka Recreation Association and for Burl Oaks Golf Club.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, WRA and Burl Oaks have both applied to renew their liquor license for two thousand seventeen, eighteen license period. Licenses are, liquor licenses are good from June first of two thousand seventeen through May thirty-first of two thousand eighteen. Both have submitted complete renewal applications and have passed the required background checks. Notices were sent to property owners within five hundred feet of each, um, site. To date, the city received one correspondence in reference to the WRA park and they were in favor, they were supportive of the renewal. WRA currently is licensed to sell three-two, um, beer with the incidentals of pop, candy, and bagged snacks. Beer is not served during youth events. Burl Oaks currently is licensed to sell intoxicating liquor, wine, and beer, and has a permit to sell also on Sundays. Both are currently seeking to continue the same operations that they have in past years. Staff recommends approval, approval of renewing both liquor licenses for WRA and Burl Oaks with the conditions outlined in the staff report.
That's it? That's it, okay. Um, so this is a public hearing, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna open the public hearing. Um, does councilor staff have any questions of city clerk, Ms. Lindquist? Otherwise, okay, so, we'll open the public hearing, and if there's anybody here that wishes to speak for or against this, these applications, you may do so at this time. I'm assuming the applicants are here, so, um, okay, so nobody wishes to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing and take it back to council. I'm looking for approval and we can, so the public hearing was for both West Tonka and Burl Oaks, just wanna make that clear. Um, one public hearing for both items, and, uh, what is your pleasure, council?
Oh, I'll move to.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, both?
I'll second that.
Okay?
Yes, both.
Okay, Mr. Maliter made a motion to approve both, um, renewal licenses for West Tonka Recreation Association and for Burl Oaks Golf Club, and it was seconded by Ms. Mortenson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye, all those opposed, motion passes five oh. Thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, business items, we have accept quotes and award the contract for our water tower cleaning project, Mr. Hornby.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council, we did go out for quotes for the, um, float down inspection and cleaning of both water towers. The one up on Sunnyfield Road and also the one on Kings Point Road. Uh, we got two, um, firms that submitted quotes that actually came in identical from a price standpoint. Um, if you add up the numbers on the Scandi Consulting one, they actually came out to be a little bit more, but they had an optional item in there for both tanks to add a, um, removable silt stop. And so I took that out, and actually these both matched. Um, in talking to Public Works, uh, on these items, Badger State Inspection does do work for us on inspecting these tanks when we have antennas and apparatus installed under agreement with communications. And they've also done some other inspection work on it. Their proposal is much more detailed than the previous one, identifying, uh, clearly in their scope what they're going to perform and how they're going to perform that work. And staff does recommend awarding, uh, this work to Badger State Inspection. And there's a resolution, uh, in the packet for your consideration of approval. And the total amount quoted was fourteen thousand four hundred dollars.
Okay, questions?
Uh, do you have one question? Um, the, can you give us any opinion on the proposed, um, filter sediment that was optional? I need for that, or?
Well, we haven't had it in there, um, I think the main issue with the sediment has been the amount of iron and manganese in the, in the water itself. And then also we did have had, um, an issue with sediment in one of the wells that, um, we actually ended up putting a screen in that a few years back. So, I think that resolves a lot of the sediment issues, and with water treatment should greatly reduce the sediment, so we didn't think that was necessary for that, so it's green.
But they're gonna take the sediment out.
Correct.
I mean, they're gonna clean it out.
Correct.
Initially. Um, how many, so it was talking about a drawdown and stuff, how many gallons do they have to draw down?
They'll, they'll empty that tank to clean it.
Where do they put the water?
Goes into your system.
Oh, okay, okay, so it's not like dumped on the ground?
Well, you just stop pumping water into it, but it, but the use.
Right. The use will empty it.
So then how, how does that work? Um, so it said somewhere between eight and ten hours, it has to be emptied. Okay, so then how do our residents get water in the meantime then, for those eight to ten hours?
The wells will be on operational, all of them, so that, um, they'll be, there'll still be, our firm capacity for our wells will still, uh, meet that demand.
Okay.
We just don't wanna have a fire in the middle of a drawdown, that's.
Right. Do, do you like inform Mound and St. Bonnie that we're doing this drawdown and be on standby, if you will?
We will have them do that, and we'll have Public Works coordinate that with the Public Works for each one.
Okay, all right.
So we do, so we do have a water source, they're looking at that one ten hour day.
To clean it, how long does it take to?
Well, to clean and to inspect it.
They do it at the same time.
Okay.
So what they physically do is they put a raft inside and they.
It sounds pretty cool.
And they go down, and they inspect the tank around the bottom and, and then clean out, and then they clean, scrub and clean the interior, disinfect and then refill the tank.
Okay.
You're not kidding?
No.
No, no, there's a little raft, they put a raft inside, yeah.
As the water comes down, the raft comes down, they're able to look.
Yeah. And I'm assuming they clean it as they go down, so.
Wow.
Okay. Just a little tiny raft.
I don't think they rig the raft back up when they fill the tank. I think they, I think they rope them up themselves out there, so. And then mayor and council, just to kind of put all this in perspective, so now, now that we have treated water essentially going at both plants, we're not quite, I think we're not quite done with the south plant with all the punchless things, but what we're doing right now is we're, we don't wanna put treated water in the tank with all the sediment that's still in the tank.
Exactly.
This is kind of step one, we're gonna clean out the tank, so the water we put in there that's been treated is, stays that way, doesn't get polluted again, so to speak, with the untreated water and sediment.
Right, the sediment.
For years. One of the next things we'll be working on is to clean some of the lines, kind of power flush the lines, so to speak, that are the main distribution lines, so. That'll be a little bit more impactful for residents, but we'll be giving them hopefully enough, uh, lead time so they know, eh, eh, this is probably something that would occur overnight or on weekend, even if not quite the weekend, but for sure overnight. Um, and we'll give people enough heads, heads up, so that's when our least usage is, is overnight, so.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I do have one question for you all. Um, so they're actually doing an inspection as they're doing this, not just cleaning, they're inspecting?
Yes.
Correct.
If there are repairs to be made, or identify potential repairs, are either one of these firms in the business of making those repairs?
Both are actually, and so, um, what we ask them to do is to make sure we have an apples to apples, is provide interior and exterior inspections and, and provide a written report on the issues they find so that we can, um, budget for future repairs. So they wouldn't be doing the repairs at the same time.
Okay, so, no potential for conflicts of interest there?
Uh, that's what I was wondering, but they said they, they're gonna take pictures and, and document it, so then it would be hard, I mean, 'cause that's exactly what I thought, is there a conflict of interest?
And, and, you know, once we have a report from them, we'll hand it to our staff and, uh, also the Public Works to review it, so.
And then they may not be the firm to get the bid, bid either for the repairs. In fact, you may even wanna, I don't know, disqualify them.
Depending on the level of it, we may wanna put that for bid, so.
Yeah. But yeah, good comments. Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, um, do I have a motion to accept the quotes and award the contract for the water tower cleaning project? And it would be awarded to, um, be, uh, Badger State Inspections LLC in the amount of fourteen thousand, was it four hundred?
Four hundred, yeah.
Yeah, in the amount of fourteen thousand four hundred.
So moved.
Uh-oh, tie. Ms. Tho made the motion and Ms. Mortenson seconded. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye, all those opposed, motion passes five oh. So next we have accept bids and award the contract for the seal coat and crack fill projects. Mr. Hornby again.
Mayor, members of the council, uh, we did open bids, uh, for the crack fill and seal coat project. This is a cooperative bid project between the cities of Minatrista, Shorewood, and Victoria. And the past, in past years as this year, Shorewood has been the lead agency on bidding the project out. Um, Shorewood and I, I know Shorewood has, um, has awarded the contract for their schedule, I believe Victoria did as well. Um, so the portion that the city of Minatrista would be looking at is just your, the city's schedule. Um, the low bid was received from Allied Blacktop Company, uh, their grand total bid for the entire project was two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy cents. The Minatrista portion of that project bid is fifty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. The area that is proposed to be seal coated, crack filled and seal coated is, uh, with this project is the north and south Saunders area. And there is a resolution in your packet for your consideration or award to Allied Blacktop Company for their, uh, Minatrista scheduled bid of fifty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars.
And Mr. Hornby, how much, I know it's fifty-one, three ninety for the city of Minatrista, what was estimated for our portion?
It's a good question, I looked at the engineer's estimate, it was three hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven.
For the total?
And I, for the total, I, I don't have the engineer's estimate for the, just the Minatrista.
And then, what did we have budgeted?
I did a quick, well, we had ninety thousand budgeted.
Okay.
Um, and then obviously some of that's engineering, but I think the contract would have been about sixty-five thousand if I did some calculations of the total, you know, give or take, or.
Okay, 'cause I just wanted to know how much under are we in, and should we be looking at doing, not this year, but in the future years, should we be looking at doing a little bit more?
It could be, you know, every year we take a look at these and we try to balance what'll fit within the budgeted amount, and we always talk about, okay, do we have a parking lot we could throw in there, do we have something else we could throw in there?
Right.
And so we, it looks like we're gonna have some extra money this year, so whether or not we use that in other areas in the pavement management, or we, um, add to this project, we could look at doing that.
Okay.
As well, but, um, or carry this over to next year.
Okay, maybe carry it over to next year, but then make sure we get, 'cause I know seal coating is really important and we have a lot of roads to do.
Yeah, I think next year, Kings Point Road is on the schedule.
Okay.
So, question, how, how old are these streets from when it was last ever, were they?
You know, I don't have that information, they're at least seven years since, in fact, I think in my discussions with Gary, he doesn't believe these have ever been seal coated.
And that Saunders Lake area is like fifteen years old?
At least. The north is, is a little younger, if you will, but.
Public Works did go in, um, two years ago, a year and a half ago, they went in and, um, did a lot of patching around manholes and, uh, did some curb replacement and so forth, uh, to get it ready for seal coating. So they did go and do some prep work in there.
So we're comfortable with the age that we don't feel that we have to go on overlay in the immediate future?
Uh, and these, yes. They actually are not in bad shape.
Okay, good, good questions, um, any other questions? Otherwise, um, is there a motion to approve awarding the bids and, uh, for the twenty seventeen seal coat and crack fill projects in the amount of fifty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Mr. Maliter. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye, all those opposed, motion passes five oh. And, uh, next we move on to our reports, I will start with our city administrator, Mr. Veroni.
Uh, thank you, mayor and council, I have a few items I gotta, I'm going to go through here for your edification. Um, did have a mound fire commission meeting last Wednesday that I attended, I won't give you any details, uh, because I know either council member Bruce or mayor Whalen will comment on that. But I was in attendance at that meeting, it was a very good meeting. Um, strategic plan that we did a few months ago, I hope to have something back in front of you for a June council meeting, I'm shooting for the fifth, but we'll see what happens, but my goal is to have it here in front of you, back on, uh, back to you on June fifth. The Knuts and mediation process, um, had a chance to speak with, um, Jim Straumann today from Kennedy and Graven, he's still in the process of putting. and Graven, he's still in the process of putting together all the statements and exhibits, it is scheduled for May 18th. And as we get a little bit closer, you'll get some more detailed information as a whole, but especially for Mr. Maliter and for mayor Whalen, but you'll be getting something probably emailed to you sometime next week. We probably won't need to get together as a group and meet, there'll be plenty of time during the actual mediation session to, to discuss the, the information that's there, but you'll have something ahead of the time to read and then as I spoke with Mr. Straman today, he doesn't feel as if we're gonna need a, kind of a pre-meeting before the mediation. We did hold interviews for our Public Works Maintenance Worker Position that we had open, we also did those last Wednesday. We should have something back in front of the city council on May 15th, hopefully a contingent offer of employment for one of our candidates, it was, there's some, couple of good candidates there, so it was, it was good process. And then I will be out of town at the Minnesota City Managers Association Annual Conference this Wednesday through Friday.
What? I guess, yeah, I guess probably everyone knows recycling cleanup day is May 13th, I think eight to three, it should be on the website, but yeah.
Week from Saturday.
Week from Saturday, just so people can bring their.
May 13th, I'm sorry, what time, eight?
Eight, eight to three.
Eight AM to 3 PM?
Yep.
Good to know. Okay, and of course Trista Day is the following weekend, which is?
The 20th, yep.
20th, so maybe, maybe Paul, you, were you, chief, were you gonna do a report too?
I am, thank you, madam mayor, members of the council. I have a couple of items to disc, or I guess update you on, I'll start out with some awards that were recently issued at a department meeting. With that, I guess I'll just say that one of the more rewarding parts of my job, I think, is, is being able to recognize exemplary work of employees and, and this year and I guess the end of last year, we've had a number of cases that were rather complex and so as a result of that, the awards I'm gonna talk about tonight, just kinda give you a summary, but they, all of these awards stem from two different cases, so with that said, I'll start with the first one. It occurred early in the morning hours on Thanksgiving Day of 2016, but we haven't had a department meeting since that, we typically have two to three meetings a year, and so this was the first opportunity to recognize the employees for their, their outstanding work, so on Thanksgiving morning, you can imagine, many of our staff had to be called in to do some fairly complex investigations. This was a second degree assault case, which is a felony level crime, it was a stabbing case, I can't go into the details, but nonetheless, we had a lot of staff working very, very hard to process two different scenes and interview a number of people and I'm, I guess happy to report that the victim is doing fine and charges were successfully filed as a result of their exemplary work, so we had five commendation awards that were issued to, and I'll name them off, Lieutenant Craig Squires, Sergeant Pat Cummings, Detective Chad Griggs, Officer Michael Bruzak and Officer Nate Hince as a result of that case, so they did an outstanding job with that very difficult case. We also had in 2017, a rather complex missing person case that involved two juveniles, one of which we believed to be suicidal, and there were a number of extenuating circumstances that made this case very difficult to investigate and to find their whereabouts, they had been planning this for a substantial period of time and had made arrangements to essentially go undetected, so you can imagine the difficulty in that case. And there were some, some details I'm not gonna share, I'm not really allowed to share, but nonetheless, it was a very complex case, it was very time sensitive and it required really some investigative work that isn't normal in these type of cases, and so again, there was a lot of exemplary work done and there were six awards issued for this case, all the work done in this case. The first one was an award of excellence, that was to Lieutenant Craig Squires for not only his exemplary investigative work, but his supervisory, supervisory skills in this case, because he was overseeing this entire operation that involved five other employees in addition to himself. There were also five commendation awards issued for that case to Sergeant Pat Cummings, Detective Ryan Wagner, Detective Brandon White, Officer Jesse Schmidt and Officer Justin Thompson, so again, very, very good work and we're happy to report that we had a safe and successful outcome for both of those juveniles. We got them home, we got the one, the help they needed and we have not had an issue with either one of these individuals since that, so happy to report.
That's good.
That, so just while I'm talking about awards, I just wanna make a comment real quickly, we do have a department policy that, that talks about awards and I won't go into a lot of detail, but there's essentially seven or eight different level awards, so at the top end, we have some, an award of valor, life-saving award, there are some very high level awards that are issued very, very rarely, certainly if, if that were to ever occur, we would absolutely do that here at the council meeting. And some of these awards, the, the award of excellence, the commendation awards and the meritorious service award are, are, I shouldn't say really common, but those are the ones we issue the most and those are typically done at department meetings, and so mayor Whalen and I have had some communications about how maybe we could involve the council in, in that, like I said, we do have a number of meetings, department meetings each year and so we're discussing ways to, to make that happen maybe at least once a year. So I know there's gonna be some additional awards coming out of some very large cases that have happened since these happened, we just had a lot of very complex cases this year, so a lot of good work, so I'm happy to report that. And we'll keep you posted when that happens.
Okay.
Next item, you're probably all familiar with the emergency management training for elected officials that occurred on March 29th. I guess as a follow-up to that, we've been talking for quite some time about having some additional training to that effect, but a little bit more specific to our city or even more specifically both St. Bonnie and Minnetrista, and it would, it would, I guess dive into a few more details. Fortunately for you, most of the emergency management issues fall on me as the emergency management director and, and my staff at the public safety department, so you can rest easy knowing that we're all prepared and, and we do train on that very, very regularly. But with that said, we'd like to get our councils together, if possible, both St. Bonnie and Minnetrista together at the same time, if not, then we'll do them separately, either way is fine with me, I prefer together, but we'll see what St. Bonnie says, the invitation's out there and I'm waiting to hear back about that. But we'd like to have some additional training here in our training room that would include some tabletop exercises, and so just a brief explanation of that, it's really an informal training and it kinda walks you through, we probably use a storm event since that's the most likely thing that we would face here, and then we pick some other type of event as well and just walk you through what that looks like and then you'd have a better idea of what it is we do and what exactly is your role and, and so you'd be able to see what that looks like from start to finish, and we'd likely bring in one or two of the Hennepin County Emergency Management people to, to assist us with that so that we can work with you rather than put the class on, they can do that with our assistance, of course, and then we work with you and you can see how the emergency operations center works and so on and so forth, so we're working with St. Bonnie, trying, hopefully we can make this happen jointly and we'll keep you posted on some possible dates and, and get that all set up soon.
Thank you very much, that'd be very interesting, not only to know our roles, but also to know what, what you do and how you handle things, I mean, I think it's just good information to have and it'd be a wonderful exercise and I think jointly would be fantastic, we've always talked about doing joint council meetings with some of our neighboring cities, so this would be just kind of a two for, you know, two for one event, so that would be great if we could, so thank you very much, looking forward to that. Alright, thanks, Paul. Okay, so we'll move on to, any other staff, I'll quickly move on to council reports, so yes, I attended the fire meeting along with council member Bruce and I will let council member Bruce talk about that in her reports. Also, myself and some of our staff, Mr. Veroni and Mr. Abel, we had a meeting with commissioner Penny Steele, who is one of our Three Rivers Park District Commissioner, we talked to her about trails, specifically trails, like you said about along the Halsted thing, we talked about the Farm Hill purchase and how that was all gonna work and we also talked a little bit about the trail along County Road 44th, we have a city trail that comes down onto Lotus and then it crosses Lotus and just kind of stops, and so we wanted to talk to them about possibly extending that trail and connecting it to the regional park trail there and how we could do that, and so they gave us some ideas, we, we have some information that we'll be pursuing, but, so those are some of the things we shared. I also attended this past weekend, the mayor's association, the League of Minnesota Cities' Mayor's Association Annual Conference, it was a great conference, good speakers, we had the director for the Minnesota Tourism was there, some very good information and we also had some other speakers along with, let's see, representative Emmer was there and spoke and just a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to speak and talk with other mayors around the state in terms of what their issues are, how they're handling it, what they're doing and how they, how they operate, so great conference and that's all I'm gonna share right now.
I attended the planning commission meeting on April 24th, that's pretty standard stuff.
I attended the steering committee, it was our final meeting on the 24th. Oh, and just a note for the people that were on the committee, I don't know if there's any kind of recognition, but it was a lot of time and I don't know if we can send thank yous or something in gratitude, Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe a mention on the website or something.
Yeah.
I'll talk to staff, maybe we can figure something out, I think you're right, they, they deserve some recognition, that'd be nice.
And let's see, WCC meeting is being held at Borough Oaks on the 11th and Trista Day, Cassandra did a good job of updating on all the things that are going on with the pig races. One thing I just wanted to mention to the city council, when you see something come on, through on the claims where it says pig races, there was a five hundred dollar check written for this one, there is a fund set up just for the pig races, so it really is paid for, I just wanted to make.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, you did an excellent job too.
Yes, it was fun, it was, it was good, so, and that's it?
I was at the steering committee as well, we get that covered. Other item in the report is LMCD. We did approve, a lot of this is just recap of what we had talked about last time, Lims Lake, homeowners association and also the duck request by the COE was approved, so I gave you that, it's probably coming up on our agenda here shortly. Pretty much, most of the discussion on that was previous meeting. The biggest item was the budget and it was rather contentious, couple hours, but we did end up with a balanced budget, it was a painful process, but that's going to be coming before us here, I would assume within the next month, 'cause I think we have to have it done by the first of July.
First of July, yeah.
So there are some big things that we ended up taking out of the budget, it doesn't mean that they're not gonna happen, but we're gonna focus on a little more the revenue side to see if we can generate additional fundraising, additional grants to support that, but at this point, it's a balanced budget, so.
Okay.
I attended the mound fire commission meeting and most of the conversation, again, was around budgeting, but they had a surplus and are just moving some money from 2018 to 2017 to replace the 1998 truck and I was impressed that they actually used those trucks that long. So we also did mention having a policy about the reserve fund to establish possibly a percentage limit that it should be below, because there doesn't seem to be a policy, so we'll follow up on that later. And we saw some videos about cancer rates, about firefight, that firefight, a higher, videos that show that firefighters have higher cancer rates than the general population and looking at using some of the reserve fund to mitigate that in the future.
So it was some cleaning materials, cleaning equipment?
Equipment, yeah.
And buying, yeah.
Expensive cleaning equipment.
I had heard some of that in the press too and had mentioned something to Mr. Veroni and so I think that, you know, we wanna be supportive of, of, whether it's, you know, St. Bonnie or mound, they are providing our fire services and we wanna do, you know, support whatever it is that they're, yeah, to keep them safe.
And then I didn't attend the Pioneer Creek meeting, I had a case of bronchitis and called Pam and she couldn't go either, so.
Okay, alright, well, thank you. Alright, Mr. Abel?
Yes, I need, we are gonna have a Parks Commission meeting on the 9th and then I need someone to attend the planning commission on the 22nd.
Can I look at my calendar? I, I could, I can probably do the 22nd.
Okay.
Planning? And?
The 9th of May, right?
Yep.
I don't have my calendar.
What time is that?
Seven.
Seven.
And that's the Parks?
Correct.
I can do that one.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, so Pam will do Parks, I'll do Planning and there we have it. Any further business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Bruce made the motion and Mr. Maliter seconded, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Thank you.